I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common sense.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Steen.
Present.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Present.
Councilmember Jordal.
Present.
Hagan.
Present.
Carolyn.
Present.
Enright.
King.
Present.
Austin. We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Item number one is a motion for adoption of the agenda. We are removing item number fourteen. We're gonna shuffle things a little bit also, but we'll do that as we get to it. So we need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Item two is a motion for approval of amendments from October fifth, two thousand fifteen. We need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Item number three, under citizens addressing the council. The first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna skip to number four on the awards and talked about Austin's team impact of martial, of impact martial arts and fitness. And who's your spokesman, Jerry? Is that you?
Troy Williams.
Troy, Troy Wayne?
Williams.
Williams.
Troy, why don't you come on up here and, and tell us why we should be proud of you? We are, but we need to know more about it.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone for recognizing our efforts and everything that we've done here in the last couple of months. I've taken sixteen year of students and we first went to the Minnesota State Championships and we took over twelve first place state championships and then the rest were seconds and we only had ten people with us that went along. And then we went to our birth of nationals and we went down with five national championships. And then, I believe it was five seconds and three thirds. So, we're really proud of their hard work and effort that they put into it and, thank you for recognizing our efforts.
Would you like to introduce the gentleman, the young gentlemen that are here? I know they all couldn't make it.
Yeah.
Come on up. Come on up, everybody.
We have, Jerry, sorry. Yeah, we're Harvey and then Ethan Knox, Riley, Marley, Brian Wallstrom, Owen Wallstrom, and Josiah, and Matt.
And what are the ages, from where to where?
You know, it varies. I mean, our youngest competitor, I believe, was probably about nine years old.
Okay.
We also had some students at nationals, it was kinda fun. We actually went across the competition all the way from Canada to, out east to California and to Chicago and all the above.
Where were they held?
Up in Bloomington, Minnesota.
Okay.
Yep. So, it was a great day for us.
Great, great.
Somebody else came in.
Oh, here.
This is Robert Andrews.
Robert?
Robert Andrews has taken nothing but first place since he started competing, so there's no second place like that.
And how many, and how many years have, has you been in existence?
Here, you know, originally I was at the Oak Park Mall and then since we moved across the street up there in the old Cashwise Building.
Okay.
So, we're counting on a year there pretty soon. And most of these gentlemen here, Josiah's been with me for, going on about two years now, and Mr. Wallstrom. But other than that, they're all pretty relatively new to the art.
And my last question, maybe my last, is what exactly now, you hear judo, karate, what is the, the actual martial art that you, you guys teach and use?
Well, what they competed with was called sport karate. So, sport karate is a controlled, you know, puncher kit in a single form and with another opponent cross fighting. They also do a competition with forms. So, a, you know, caliber movements that's done in sync and they're judged on their stances, their intensity and the way that they perform, you know, the form.
And they have belts? I mean, black or yellow?
Correct. Yep, yep. So, we got them all the way from beginner to, we address them as Mr. J and Mr. B. Brian and Josiah are my assistant instructors.
Mm-hmm.
And so, without them, they, you know, couldn't be possible. So, they're doing a great job of helping me out and building the team.
All right. Well, thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to mention, I think Jerry competes in the over forty category.
Over forty?
I, I think he's a little, they, they don't have an over sixty, huh? Okay.
If they had an only sixty, over sixty, you'd be a small category. There you go.
Are there any girls on your team?
Not as of yet, but soon.
No?
My wife. My wife is just now getting her, this week she's gonna test and then she's gonna be our first competitor at a tournament coming up here in November.
And you're located across the street, you said, now? Where are you located?
Well, I'm in the old Cashwise Building.
Oh, in the old Cashwise. Okay. So, if somebody wants to come down and check you out, they can do it in the old Cashwise.
Absolutely, yeah. We have kids ages from four to sixteen and then, you know, we also do adult martial arts, self-defense. I just put on a free TAP, stands for Total Tech Protection Skills seminar here, was the last one or the Monday before that? Yeah, and we had over sixty people show up for it. So, it was free to the community. It's kinda my way of giving back, you know?
Okay.
So, yeah, it was well represented and we had a good time.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Congratulations, yeah.
We're proud of you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Tim Flaherty from the Coalition, but we're gonna have Bill Spitzer talk next because he's gonna talk to us about workforce housing and something I think Tim is interesting in, or?
Just workforce issues.
Workforce issues, okay. I think that's something that Tim is, is interested in, so we'll do, you first. Go ahead, Bill.
Thank you.
Former mayor of St. Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I appreciate for you to give, for you to come in and talk a little bit about an initiative that's going on right in your backyard. And I just wanted to give you a brief summary of what we're doing and what we're all about. Basically, I'm the southeastern Minnesota Together Coordinator and what my job is, is to try to coordinate three regional conversations. And basically, what we wanna do is we wanna bring and raise awareness and also come up with some strategic plans and also some action plans of what we can do about workforce. Just a little brief history about myself, like the mayor said, I was the mayor of St. Charles for ten years, so I know exactly what, some of the things that you're up against sitting at the council table there. And some of those things revolve around businesses and trying to attract businesses to our area. And one of the things that we know firsthand is that if you're gonna draw businesses to your area, you need a workforce and a good quality workforce to do that. And we've heard a lot about Destination Medical Center, we've heard a lot about Journey to Growth, and we've heard about how the area is going to grow. And one of the concerns that southeastern Minnesota Together had was, okay, all these jobs are gonna start coming into the area and all of you, I'm sure, are aware of our workforce shortage that we have right now. Unemployment rate is incredibly low and that is good. However, when you start expanding businesses and start bringing more businesses into the region, you find out where are these workers going to come from. And then the other concerns that we have is, okay, if the medical center in Rochester is gonna continue to grow, where are those employees gonna come from? Are they gonna start sucking in from our smaller communities surrounding Rochester and the eleven county area? So, one of the things that we wanna do is we wanna hold three conversations and one of them's right in your back door over in Everly. I apologize, we couldn't have it in Austin, but they only gave us enough money to have them in three different areas. So, we're gonna have one in Everly, one in Owatonna, and one in Winona. Kinda trying to develop those strategic areas that we could draw from. But one of the reasons that I'm here today, or tonight, this evening, is to make sure that you know of the shortage that we have. I gave you a nice little flyer that kinda brings it home, forty-five thousand jobs is what we're gonna be looking for over the next twenty years. And that's something that we should all take to heart and say, okay, what are we gonna do about that? What kind of strategic plan do we need to make? We're gonna probably have to do something different. One of the things that you know is that you're gonna probably have a lot of retirees like myself. I just retired from the sheriff's office after thirty-three years and I knew I wasn't done, I knew I wanted to still do something, but how do you engage people that are retired to still remain in that workforce? And those are some of the things that we hope that are gonna come out of these conversations. Broadband is another one. How can we try to involve people that are still at home and bring them back into the workforce? So, some of those things are some of the things that we, we know that are probably gonna come up at these conversations. But here's what I'm asking the council. You as council members know a lot of business people in the community. You are probably the best marketer that I'm going to have because not a lot of people know who Bill Spitzer is, but they all know who you are. And what I would like you to do, if you wouldn't mind, is just kinda using some of those resources that you have. Maybe some of those people will come up to you and say, you know what, I'd like to expand my business, but I can't find anybody to work for me. You hear all those things from a council level, you are the one that are gonna be able to say, hey, you know what, we heard about this conversation that's gonna be going on in Everly. I know your HR director is already signed up and I know Craig's been helping us on the planning committee and I know that, you know, some of your economic development officials are helping us and the chamber's helping us try to get some more businesses. But what I wanted you to do is to make sure that Austin is heard at these conversations. That's very important to me because we wanna make sure that everybody in this region around in the Austin, Everly area is at the table. Right now, we have about eighty people that are signed up, we have room for a hundred and twenty, so we still have a few seats to fill. So, my challenge to Mr. Mayor and the council and the rest of the people that are here, if workforce is something that you're really are keying in on, then I would encourage you to take the time to look at some of the material that we have. It's pretty easy. It's SEMNtogether.org. Just go to that website, that'll tell you all the information that I have here. And that's my plug, Mr. Mayor. If you have any questions or any members of the council, feel free.
I, I've got five things on my schedule already on the twenty-ninth, or I'd take a look at it, but Will, you say we have our HR director going, so?
I believe, yep.
Okay. And if anybody from the council is interested, we'll certainly see that we can get somebody over there.
Is workforce housing one of the, part of the conversation?
I, I have like a fifteen-minute elevator speech, but I promised the mayor and anytime you give a mayor, a former mayor, a microphone, I will take that fifteen minutes if you give it to me. But I promised them five minutes. Yes, workforce housing is one of the things that we know is gonna come up. Transportation's gonna come up, daycare's gonna come up. All these different conversations we know are gonna come up and that's what's gonna make it challenging. At the end of the day, we're gonna have to develop some sort of strategy and develop some sort of action plans of, you know, how are we gonna address those other issues?
There's certainly issues that are relevant to us. I mean, there's no doubt, especially workforce housing, that's one of the things we talked about for most of the day, so.
Absolutely. Everybody needs a place to live. I mean, you, you find a job, the next thing you do is find a place to live and if you can't find a place to live?
And we have a shortage, believe it or not. A lot of people don't understand that, but we do in Austin, so. Okay, I thank you much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll try and get some of that, we get more people there. And next, we have Mr. Flaherty from the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. We have spent quite a bit of time together today and I get to listen to his, you're really gonna pound it into me because this is like the fifth time I've heard this today, it's really relevant and really, really important and, and he's done so much for us. I think, you know, back a few years ago when LGA was really being attacked, if it wasn't for, for Mr. Flaherty and his organization, we'd be looking at a much different economic situation in our city right now as far as taxes. So, thank you for that and let's hear what you have.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for shuttling me around the city for all these meetings and stuff today. I also wanna thank you for serving on the board of the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities and, and stepping up in that regard. What I'm gonna do tonight is just kinda tell you where we've been, the last session of the legislature and where we're going for the next session. And we'll try to do that. We could talk, we could talk for half hour on any one of these topics, but I'll try to keep it short and then take some questions. So, as a brief reminder of those, you can see the map there, all those spots where we have members. We work on LGA property taxes, economic development, annexation of land use, transportation, environmental regulation. Now, this year, we really focused on the LGA, economic development, and environmental regulation, so we'll cover those a little, a little harder. Twenty fifteen session, before it got started, I just wanted to remind you that we did sponsor the first gubernatorial debate in Rochester between the candidates for governor and I think that was helpful for the organization. Co-sponsored it with the, with the newspaper and the chamber in, in Rochester. Twenty fourteen, of course, the House reelection set the stage for things and resulted in ten seats flipping from the Democrats to Republicans. Nine of ten of those were in greater Minnesota, so there was a lot of speculation this would be the greater Minnesota session. That was on everybody's lips at the beginning. The emphasis by the House Republicans was to bring balance for greater Minnesota and that, by the way, is a position that I agreed with. I don't think we were getting quite enough attention. And then, of course, there was a massive budget surplus, think about two billion dollars, more or less, a little bit, but that's what we started the session with. Our goals were to return LGA to the two thousand and two funding level. I'll show you what that means, but we don't think that was too much to ask. Passed the economic development program and then part of that program was workforce housing, job training, greater Minnesota business development, public infrastructure, and broadband. And all of those things were considered, not all were dealt with, but they were considered. Comprehensive transportation package and environmental reforms. And so, we're just gonna go right into this. Impressed for an LGA increase of forty-five million dollars, that would get us back to the two thousand and two level and it turned out to be twenty-two point seven five million in a year for each of two years. Would help cities catch up for all the cuts they had suffered during the recession, the cuts they had to make in their own capital programs and frozen wages and things like that. We didn't really have any support from the governor for this increased funding level. It was included in the tax, senate tax bill. And the House proposed a five million dollar cut for first-class cities, Minneapolis, St. Paul, and Blue. Really, the House, you say, what did they do? Well, they had two billion dollar surplus and they focused on two billion in tax cuts, which of course doesn't leave very much for things like local aid or broadband or anything else really when you do that. The House cuts the first-class cities, we believe, will threaten the survival of the LGA program. I mean, you stop to think about it, if you take away support from all the legislators from those cities, you aren't, you aren't gonna have enough to support the program to keep it. And it based, it changed the basis of funding from an objective formula, which we all decided and worked on through year, twenty thirteen. And it was the metro cities, Minneapolis, St. Paul, us, legal cities, everybody worked on a formula, we agreed to it, we all agreed it was fair. And we think you cannot just arbitrarily pick out some cities to take money away from them really for, for no reason. The cuts were made to first-class cities on some really erroneous assumptions. For example, people were saying, well, LGA was originally for small cities. Actually, in the original LGA law, they specifically appropriated money and talked about and had in the law Minneapolis and St. Paul. So, you can see, a lot of rumors get going at the Capitol and we're going around and correcting them now with all these legislators and we did them too, but then first-class cities get too much, so that's just, the share of Minneapolis and St. Paul stayed about the same, their share of the LGA appropriation. And actually, from the start of the program, their share has gone down significantly. Actually, greater Minnesota's share has gone up. And the reason for that is, LGA is based on property wealth. And if you have less property wealth per capita in your community, you're gonna get more aid. So, as their property wealth went up in Minneapolis, their aid went down, which is the way it's supposed to work. So, and then the first-class cities have a lot of tax base and they do, but Minneapolis ranks one hundred and thirteenth in the state, St. Paul two hundred and sixteenth, Blue's two sixty-one. And you can see how low your tax base is, which is why you get close to eight million dollars in local aid. And we think that's a good principle. It keeps healthy communities around the state if you keep the program and keep funding. We think it was, it's important, as I said, for all cities to have this local aid program, particularly at greater Minnesota. And it is true, we get about sixty-eight percent of the funding in that program and of the new money, we get about fifty percent. Governor had zero increase, the senate had forty-five million, the House cut eighty-five million. And the outcome, because the legislature did not finish its business, was zero because there was no tax bill. Let's look at your city in particular. You can see what, the CGMC proposal there in red is what passed in the senate. It was our proposal, it passed in the senate. And you can see what, what actually passed was the current law, which in other words, they made no change. And again, that's because there was no change in the pro, in, there was no tax bill. You can see your history going back to two thousand and two, which is the level we're trying to get back at. So, actually, you're one of those cities that is already a little bit above where you were in two thousand and two, but the state appropriation isn't anywhere near that, so it's forty-five million dollars short. So, you're better off, but again, it's because your tax base hasn't grown like relative to other tax bases. This is what we try to show how important local aid is for a city like Austin. Your tax rate is thirty-eight percent now, would go to a hundred and ten percent if you didn't have local aid and letting that happen. The question is, with a two billion dollar surplus, why did the House cut LGA? Well, the press, this was from the Fireboat Forum, newspaper chain, they said it was basically a betrayal of Minnesota communities, greater Minnesota communities. Excuse me, I was hoping you brought some water. Workforce housing, big proposal we put together. Coalition has the view that if there's a problem, we have an obligation to propose a solution. So, we did propose a hundred million dollars of biennium and tax credits and grants. What the legislature passed was very small, was a five point four million dollar grant program. And what didn't pass was a tax credit to incentivize private investment and that's what the coalition is pushing for. That program, a program like that was passed in the senate tax committee, it was in the tax conference. Here we have your very own Senator Sparks and Craig Clark testifying at the legislature in the senate committee on workforce housing. And you can see the problem that we've got. If you had, what they passed will cut for about a hundred and eight units of workforce housing. Well, that could be used like in Warroad or Roseau or any one of our communities, just that amount. So, they did very little. The tax credit that we're, that we proposed at sixty million would have covered about three thousand units. So, there would have been a good start for this in many communities. Broadbands, the next issue. The Coalition's, along with the Greater Minnesota Partnership, really started the Broadband Infrastructure Fund two years ago. We did the research, we got the bill introduced and the legislature passed it and they put twenty million dollars into the first program two years ago. This year, they put only ten million and I won't, I won't belabor this, but if you wanna talk about growing your tax base and growing your population, growing your business community, broadband is not an option. It's a necessity. You've got to get that in your mind, you've got to fix that. We do in greater Minnesota, all over. We have all the research on it, which we've used at the legislature for the life of me. I do not know why we have not gotten support at the legislature for a, a meaningful program. But we're going to keep working on it and we'll see this next session. We'll show you what we're, what we're planning to do for next session. But such a critical economic development issue which would benefit the whole state really, that we just don't understand when they've got a two billion dollar surplus, why they can't, why they can't fund it at a hundred billion a year or even a biennium. The other thing we did was we passed an employer-driven job training program and I won't spend a lot of time on that, I'll just say that it wasn't funded at quite enough money, but it was a start. It's a program that North Dakota, Iowa, other communities have used successfully. We are a little bit behind in Minnesota. So, this was a new approach, so it took two years to pass, but we finally did get it passed. And that means that employers that you've got, if they, if they can't have, if they don't have workers that are trained, they can train them themselves, basically. They don't have to go through a community college or a state technical school or a state university, they can. But if that program isn't available, they can hire their own trainer. And this has been very successful. It's operated as a pilot program for one year and it really helps especially the small manufacturers. What didn't happen on transportation is really the question. Everybody wanted long-term comprehensive transportation. Senate wanted a gas tax, House wanted to use general fund. They just could not compromise at all. Each one dug in, stuck with their position. The logical thing to do would be to say, well, we'll take some of both and get it done, but it didn't happen, probably won't happen again next year. Our priorities are a program called Corridors Commerce, which is state highways that are, have bottlenecks and they go from two lanes to four lanes back to two lanes. There's all kinds of highways around the state that fit into that category, so that's what our focus was on. And cities under five thousand, city streets under five thousand, we don't get part of the constitutional formula now for city streets. What passed, one-time twelve point five million dollar funding for cities under five thousand, not, not very much environment. I'll just talk about this very briefly. We spent a couple of hours today on it with, with your, you know, fine wastewater staff employees here. We just talked, just briefly about, the main concern the coalition has is that the standards be, be right and that they be effective. And by right, we mean scientifically defensible and justifiable. So, we proposed independent peer review for expensive or novel regulations modeled after the EPA. The EPA does this kind of scientific peer review when it puts its regulations out. We think the state needed to do the same thing simply because the state is imposing standards now that no other state has and that goes directly contrary to the national science. And so, we thought that maybe a good way to handle this would be to require the Pollution Control Agency to do peer review, scientific peer review. The other major thing we did was a cost study and that did pass, actually. So, there's all kinds of new regulations on environment that are coming down and the question for our cities is if you have, I talked to one city that has a fifty dollar per household wastewater fee, one of the changes would drive them up to a hundred and twenty dollars a month. And so, I got to thinking, well, what if you took five of the changes, all of the changes they're talking about, what would that drive it to? And it's just a question that we think needs to be addressed at the state level. How much are all these requirements, assuming they're all needed, how much are they gonna cost and how are we gonna pay for them? It's gonna be in the billions. So, I mean, it doesn't help to just sweep that under the rug. So, we did pass that, that study will be done in about a year. Quick review. So, our goals were to return LGA to the two thousand and two funding level. We proposed forty-five million, the result was zero, no tax bill. We asked for workforce housing of a hundred million, the result was five point four. Job training, we asked for fifteen, we got one point eight. Greater Minnesota business development, we asked for twenty, the result was four, but the net, the primary year for funding that is really the next year because it's bonding, mostly bonding money. And then broadband, we proposed a hundred million and the results were ten point eight million. The governor was at thirty, the senate was at seventeen, and the House was at ten point eight, and then a double ten point eight. Comprehensive transportation package, no. Environmental reforms, no. So, the way we look at it is, it was, you know, not a good session, disappointing session. A lot of unfinished business there at the legislature. We hope they do better this next session. The things we learned was, we had strong bipartisan support in both the House and the senate on all of these proposals. We had plenty authors from the House, senate, I mean, we have Republicans and Democrats and still, the governor and legislature just failed, basically. Very sad. We saw that the focus on tax cuts really crowded out investments in greater Minnesota like workforce housing and broadband. Success in twenty sixteen depends on sustained engagement from community leaders and the Greater Minnesota Partnership, which has businesses and chambers and others in it. So, we aren't going to do any better next year unless we are communities across the state. And the sense I have, Mayor, from the Coalition Board, is that they are going to be up to the challenge, that they want to turn this around. So, what we're doing right now, it's not a budget year next year, but remember, they have a billion dollars a billion dollar surplus going into next year. That's what most people are thinking, that they're going to have a billion dollars they can cut taxes with, or they can make investments in, or they can do some of both. And we would argue for some of both, of course. Tax bill, we think they have to do LGA and workforce housing tax credits. That is a no-brainer. We are meeting with Republican leaders and Democratic leaders and legislators from rural Minnesota to tell them this. We want them to pass a tax bill and fund local aid and fund the workforce housing tax credit. Bonding bill, people are expecting to be about a billion dollars. That would be controversial. We're hoping that they do more infrastructure projects and use the money a little better. Transportation funding, we doubt very much they'll be very much on transportation. The sites are just too far apart. And you will, if you talk to people, you will hear a lot of optimism about transportation. But if you talk to the Democrats, they think it's going to turn out all right, because the Republicans are going to see the light go their way. The Republicans think the Democrats are going to see the light go their way. There's no talk of how a compromise could be done. So I think that's likely. House and Senate are up for election in November after the session. So that's always somewhat an incentive to do something. Preliminary priorities are the LGA, BDPI, workforce housing, Broadman, and transportation. Top priority for us is going to be local aid. It's fine if you get Broadman, but if you lose, if you lose your local aid program, it's going to kill the community, so it doesn't matter. So we're going to focus on local aid. Our view is, there's a massive budget surplus, they have a lot of unfinished business. It's an opportunity to persuade legislators and the governor to support our goals. Now, let me mention, and I'll take any questions, this is your packet. I want you to look at the, and there's a summary of the Coalition's conference that was in Duluth. Just point out to you that the Coalition's conference is coming to Austin next summer. And people are really excited about it. They hear about some kind of a new spam museum.
Oh, yeah.
And those kinds of things. We spent many years when Mayor Reitz was mayor, we had a wonderful conference here. I think some of the people still remember that. So I think we're going to have a really good conference. We do have a fall conference in Arrowood, November 12th and 13th. And I'm hoping the mayor, maybe Craig, and maybe any of the council people that could come, would come to that. Let me see if I have any more here. Oh, yes, the Fall Conference date, Legislative Action Day. And that is very popular with our members. And this year, it's late, because the session starts, I think, like March 8th. And so our Legislative Action Day is March 16th. But really, any of you that can come, that would be very helpful. Any council people, we have a good turnout of legislators, of city officials from around Greater Minnesota. It's really a time to make some progress on our agenda. And then the Summer Conference, you can see in Austin, is July 20th and 22nd. So I covered a lot of things really fast, but I think you got the gist. We expect more from the legislature, we're asking them to change their position, and the governor to change his position on some of these things. And we're hoping that, we're hoping that that happens.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions on the council? Well, you spent the whole day down here, I think, I don't know when the last time you were in downtown Austin, but Tim mentioned what a difference he had seen in our town, and thought it was very positive. We showed him around a little bit with the Justice Center and the Flood Wall.
The Flood Wall is just amazing, and the Justice Center, I mean, it all looks, and your downtown looks, I mean, I remember 20 years ago, when I was here, and 10 years ago. And I mean, the storefronts, the businesses, everything looks really good, so.
Come back in another five years, when we're done with a lot of our 20.
Coming back next summer.
Next summer, you're going to see some progress.
See the new mall, the Hy-Vee Mall, or whatever.
Very excited about that.
Yeah, that's great.
Well, thank you, and I want to thank you for what you do for our city. I think by far the strongest advocate for rural Minnesota. And it'd be a different, economically, I mean, things would be different if it wasn't for your organization. So thank you for that.
Thank you for being such a strong member and for participating. And like I said, any council people, if you saw anything on there you liked, like Broadman, we have committees and stuff, you can join if you want to, so, okay?
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Flaherty.
Thank you.
Under citizens addressing the council, do we have any citizens present tonight that wish to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda? Come on up here, give us, and I have to say, this is, after this meeting, we're going to move this section to the rear end of the meeting. Most city councils do that, we're going to do that. I think that's just the way we're going to do it from now on.
I'm Sid Brown from the Village Corp. And the Village Corp is always interested in what's going on around us. And I have some, a couple of questions. If you don't mind, I'm moving ahead to petitions and requests on page two, number 11 and 12. And I'm wondering if these aren't initial moves to building on Fox Point, which is very close to us, and we'd like to know.
Well, you're supposed to bring this up when we get to these issues.
Could you explain it when we get to them?
We could, we will.
Thank you very much.
All right. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda? Okay, we'll move forward then. Number five, we need a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Start second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Under public hearing, number six is a public hearing for an update on a small city's development grant in South Crane addition. Karen, why don't you come on up here? You don't make many meetings, we certainly want to hear from you. We want to see, we'd like to see you.
Well, we have one project totally completed. We have five projects that are waiting for contractors. This has been a very, very busy year for contractors, they're just backed up like crazy. So the gentleman who got the majority of those bids is finishing up some small cities work in, I believe, in Prescott. So I would think that he would be able to start, we're hoping, soon. What we're finding in a lot of these, in the houses that we're doing over there, we're doing a lot of roofs, we're doing some windows, we're doing a lot of bathroom floors. We've made a couple houses accessible for the people that are there. Gutters, to try to keep the basements dry. Those are probably the majority of things. How it works is, the homeowner has to put up 5%, and then the grant is worth up to $22,000. If the homeowner cannot afford the 5% or is of a certain income level, we will give them a 2% loan for that. And also, if they go over the $22,000, they can also take, include that total amount in their 5% with the loan. We helped a person get a ramp in their house, not a ramp, but a, take them up the stairs.
For handicapped?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So we're seeing quite a bit of that. We still have quite a bit of money to spend, so we're getting a lot of people. One of the problems in that area is there are a lot of rentals, and this is aimed at homeowners. So you have to find the homeowners and convince them this is a good deal. They have to be income-eligible, too, several have been over-income.
Okay.
So, but I think all in all, it's gone pretty well. It's very interesting, people are great. It's fun getting the things fixed. The guy was just thrilled, he got a new roof. He got some cracks in his basement fixed, he got gutters, he got a bathroom fixed. So he was very pleased.
Are you getting a lot of applicants?
We need some more applicants.
How do you get the word out to people?
Well, we've done it through mail.
Okay.
And then also, I think when you start seeing some progress in the neighborhood, there's going to be neighborhoods, more neighbors that'll be inquiring.
Is there an end date to the applications, or how long is that?
It would be, the end date of the program is December 31st, 2016.
Okay, so we got plenty.
Yeah.
And you just have to apply by then.
Right. And they, they also are building a Habitat house over there right now. We had a house that tax foreclosed, and I think the city gave it to us, and then we gave it to Habitat, and they were building like the next day.
Yep, I was there for that.
So, yep, that's progressing, that'll be a good addition to that neighborhood.
Excellent.
So.
Council, any questions?
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
It's a public hearing, so does anybody in the audience here have any questions or comments? All right, thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
Real excited about that area.
Very excited.
Item number seven, public hearing on sanitary sewer and water improvement assessments for a property in Turtle Creek 1 area that amounts to be assessed as $28,891.95 at 4.75% interest for 15 years. Ms. Hazel?
Yes, this is a settlement agreement that was approved at the last council meeting. And now we are having the final assessment hearing for this property. The individual was mailed the final assessment notices. And we're just asking that he be assessed at the same terms as the other group of people that were in Turtle Creek 1. So that would be a 15-year assessment at 4.75% interest.
Okay, council? Anybody from?
Public hearing.
Anybody here have any questions on this, public hearing? If not, we need a motion to adjourn and continue the hearing for those properties which, are there any written objections? There are no written objections, so we don't need to do that. We need a resolution declaring the cost. Council?
We need the motion first.
No.
No? Okay, okay.
Somebody?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
And we now need a resolution adopting the assessment rule. Council?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, that's our final public hearing. Under motions and requests, aid is a resolution in support of law enforcement. Craig?
Mayor members, this is an administration request. Unfortunately, a lot of instances across the country, officers have been targeted for attack or killed in some instances solely because they chose to protect the community and wear the uniform. This is modeled after an effort in Red Wing, and they've asked other communities to join in support of that effort. There's also a growing trend, I believe, in questioning law enforcement's authority and their legally granted authority in supporting this resolution would bandwidth our law enforcement and send our recommendation to the Obama Administration, members of Congress, and our state legislators to designate an attack on a law enforcement officer as a hate crime. Council action is requested, approve the resolution as included in the package.
All you have to do is watch the news and see that it's becoming, in some areas, open season on law enforcement. Not only attacks, but I mean, I think even during our fight at the high school, we were seeing actions that, from some of the people there, that we probably wouldn't have seen a year or two years ago. Council, do you have anything to add? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Dave, would you pass on to the department our appreciation of the job they do also? Nine is a resolution accepting donations to the city of Austin, self-explanatory.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
All right. We had a Port Authority meeting earlier today, maybe Tom can explain it a little bit, but because of that, we need a resolution to transfer $75,000 from the building fund to the Port Authority Budget Amendment III. Mr. Dankert.
This morning, the Port Authority approved the resolution to authorize the chairperson and the secretary to sign at closing, which should be the second week in November, the purchase agreement with Oak Park Mall and the sales agreement simultaneously with Hy-Vee. Again, that'll happen the second week in November. In relation to that project, the city of Austin is putting $1,625,000, the city and the Port Authority and the HRA are putting $1,625 into an escrow account for Hy-Vee to use for the demolition, asbestos removal, all TIF-eligible costs, for which then they'll pay a tax increment rebate back to us over 26 years. Part of that funding also included a three, or additionally to that, was a $375,000 grant from the state of Minnesota towards a project for TIF-eligible costs. The city, between the city and the Port Authority and the HRA, we've already contributed $1,550,000 towards that pot, so we need an additional $75,000 to get up to the $1,625. Originally, we had applied for a half a million dollar state grant. The state came through with $375,000, which was better than most communities got. So that's why we needed the extra $125. The HRA came up with 50, so now we're back to the council for $75,000. As a budget adjustment, then, we go from our building fund into the Port Authority for this tax increment district, and again, it'll take 26 years, but you'll get it repaid back.
So move the resolution.
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Am I to, can we assume that 11 and 12 are also related to this?
Yes, 11 is related to the Oak Park Mall development in that the state attorney's office has specific requirements regarding documenting costs related to tax increment districts, interest rate, repayment terms, initiation date, et cetera. The Port Authority passed their resolution this morning to document their costs, their contribution, and so that they can get repaid back. What item number 11 does is document the city council's contribution into the program so that they can get repaid back over the 26 years.
Council? If there's nothing, we, Mr. Brown, this is your thing, this has nothing to do with the area living.
I'm listening, and thank you very much.
Okay.
So move the resolution.
Okay, do we have a resolution? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
12 is a resolution approving a development pledge and inter-fund loan agreement between the city of Austin, Minnesota, Austin Port Authority, Austin Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Tom?
This is, again, related to the development of Oak Park Mall, should be the last resolution. But this is a resolution, an agreement approved by both the city, the Port Authority, the HRA, and Hy-Vee in order for all of us to get repaid back that tax increment. Again, we had to have a separate resolution documenting such. Now we have to have a separate resolution approving the agreement with Hy-Vee as the city of Austin's participating in it. Again, this won't close, and we will not sign this until it closes, which should be the week of November 9th. But we need council's authorization to sign that TIF loan agreement so that Hy-Vee could then pay us back the tax increments over the 26 years.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 13 is a motion appointing Lisa Colbert to the Human Rights Commission term expiring December 31st, 2015. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? B, appointing Jessica Swanson to the Human Rights Commission term expiring December 31st, 2016. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The Human Rights Commission is, if you haven't been to any of their things lately, Janet, I know you hosted, we had one of the tables. They're doing a lot of different things right now that are pretty amazing. So if you, if you see some of the things they're putting on, please, try and attend some of them. 14, we have removed. 15 is a series of three motions authorizing the planning and zoning department to power to remove junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at a 401 East Street Northeast, the Scatabo property, need a motion?
So move. Miss the airport hangar, can we do the airport hangar?
That's it?
Both been pulled?
We took four, yeah. We had the motions, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? B, 600 Fifth Avenue Northwest, the Molina property, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, C, 507 Seventh Avenue Southeast, the Maldonado property, would need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now to reports and recommendations, and for the first time, I'm going to be first, because I want to congratulate Mr. Dankert, Jerry McCarty, and all the people that have worked on the Oak Park Mall project. It's, I've sat in on some of the meetings, and I, there was no way I thought that this thing thing was going to get finished. It's just amazing that it did. I think one of the things I said today at the meeting, it's number one thing that people have complained about, and believe me, people have complained about a lot of things. Probably the number one thing people have complained about since I've been mayor, and something is finally being done. I know somebody's going to complain anyway about this, but I mean, it's just amazing, and I can't believe you got it done, Tom, and thank you. Thank you very much. And we're going to start on this side, because Steve has never been first on the reports before.
The loneliest man.
He may never be first again.
I have nothing to report, which I do.
And then you failed us.
Nothing to report.
Janet?
There's a Paint the Town Pink, well, it contributes to Paint the Town Pink. Runnings is having a special event because of October being Breast Cancer Awareness Month this Thursday, so it'd be great if people got out there to support that. And proceeds from Runnings Night Out will be going to the Hormel Institute for Breast Cancer Research. And this Saturday is Fall Fest sponsored by Vision 2020 Downtown Destination Committee. I think that's the right name for the committee. But it's from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's a family-friendly event. It's free of charge. There'll be trick-or-treating all up and down Main Street. There's a costume contest. There's a skits being presented, Halloween-themed skits for the, for the families and the kids. Pumpkin decorating, all kinds of different things going on. So it's a rain or shine event, and things will be moved inside the Artwork Center and the Paramount Theater if the weather doesn't cooperate, so...
10 to 2 Saturday?
10 till 1. Well, probably till 2, because the costume contest starts at 1. So that will take a little while, so come on down and enjoy the day.
Thank you, Janet. Mike?
With the Your Honor.
David?
I'd like to congratulate the library on having their biggest book sale ever. And also, on another note, with this morning's port authority, I'd like to thank Ann Hazel for the behind-the-scenes work that she did with Tom Dankert.
Thank you, Ann. Jeremy?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Craig?
Yes. The 29th, we have the senate bonding tour coming in town. They'll be looking at some various projects in the community, but the city projects of Fourth Avenue Portage Project and the Ramsey Dam. So we're looking forward to welcoming them to Austin.
Okay, any other reports?
Nope.
One more thing I'd like to mention is, on Monday, October 12th, Leo Redding passed away. Leo is a former councilperson and mayor of the city of Austin. I think he's been 18 years in that capacity. He also represented us at the state, at the state legislature. I think if anybody in Austin is, is more than 30 years old, they've met Leo, and he was a real asset to our community, so the family and friends have our condolences on that. With that, we need a motion to adjourn, and, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll take a short break and meet in small conference across the hallway.